I'd like to recall the meeting to order noting that the board has been in closed session for student residency, employment of employee, and approval of August 12, 2014, and September 9, 2014, closed session minutes. There are six members present, one absent. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, unreguiled, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the public hearing for our 2014-15 annual budget. So I'd like to call that hearing to order. We need a roll call vote.
Here.
Mrs. Stufen?
Here.
Mr. Bloom?
Here.
Dr. Harrell?
Here.
Mrs. Bistito?
Here.
Mr. Collins is absent. Mrs. Ebbner?
Here.
Okay, Chris, you can give an overview of the budget.
Thank you. I just wanted to start out by just going through the changes made to the budget between the tentative budget and the final budget. And most of the adjustments were just truing up as we got, received more accurate information from the state or in relation to our staffing, our salary and our benefits. But the biggest change was making a transfer, transfer from the operation and maintenance fund of 1.4 million, from the operation and maintenance fund to the capital projects fund in order to fund next summer's projects. Over the years, those funds have been depleted as we each year would, would do our capital maintenance projects. So now we, we were using a transfer from the O and M fund, so O and M fund balance, to fund those projects out of the capital projects fund next summer. Also, in the revenues in the capital projects fund was 100,000 of the surplus distribution from TIF 1, which was the 2004 intergovernmental agreement. But as you can see, these changes overall is a increase to the, or a reduction of the annual deficit overall, were the changes between the tentative and the final budget. David, could you do the PowerPoint? As you know, we had severe budget cuts in budget year 2011, 2012, and 2013. This is the second year, so budget year 14 and 15 now were considered maintenance budgets, where we, we kept basically the same, same program in place with, without any budget cuts. And then, but this budget also has the carryover of the 500,000 in nonrecurring capital expenditures. And also, we added discretionary staffing for instructional technology coaches, a tech support position, and class size reduction positions at York. This is our mix of operating revenues. It's really stayed very consistent over the past seven years, where our revenues are 90% from the local, local dollars, about 7% from the state, and about 3% from the federal government. That has really stayed very consistent from 2007 through the current year. But if, if Senate Bill 16 passed, obviously that would change to more, more funded locally and less funded by the state, where that, as you know, is projected to reduce our state funding by 4.5 million. District 205, very reliant on local revenue sources, 90%. The largest revenue source by far is property taxes at 84.61%. Property taxes with the tax cap are limited to CPI increase. In this budget, we have the 2013 tax extension with a CPI of 1.7, and the 2014 tax extension, which will be a CPI of 1.5%. That 1.5 will be the coming levy, where we, this coming levy, where we have the estimated levy in November, and then the, the final levy approval will be in December. Interest revenues, as you know, are based on historic low rates, so we're really getting very minimal dollars now from interest revenues. The state of Illinois, this past year caught up on their delinquent payments for mandated categoricals. So last year, we received five payments. The state superintendent has warned us that we should not expect that fourth payment in June. So this budget only includes three quarterly payments. Mix of operating expenditures, we're, we are a service organization. We deliver instruction to students, so because of that, we are very labor intensive. 77.32% of our expenditures are for staffing. So salaries come in, salary increases come in two, two components. One is the rate increase to staff, and the other is the, the number of staff. And from a, from a rate increase, all of our staff received a 1.7% increase, which is the CPI. Other than the teaching staff, which per the collective bargaining agreement, received step increases only in this budget. From a benefit standpoint, the PPO insurance plan increased at 7.95%. The HMO increased at 4.41%, and the dental was flat. From a staffing standpoint, due to rising enrollment and the diverse needs of our students, we had some significant increases here in the, in the number of teaching staff. It has certified staff increasing at 23.8 positions. 11.6 of those are at the high school, 2.8 at the middle school, 6.4 at the elementary school, and then we have three positions which are contingency. Also, in the staffing, we added a REACH professional development coordinator. We, we added a tech support position. We added a ELL secretary at York. Oh, the certified staffing includes the discretionary staffing of 4.4 instructional tech coaches and the two class size reduction positions at York. The other thing that you'll notice is, in 2011, '12, we had 1,073 positions, where we now have 1,147 positions. So we've, we've added 73.73 positions since 2011, '12. Three years of any, almost 74 positions. And the budget summary here, the, you can see that we have the 1.5 million fund balance at the end of, of June in capital projects funds. That's to fund next summer's projects, which include tuck pointing at Bryan, Jefferson, and Madison, a project with the Hawthorne, Hawthorne roof, and also, we have a York building automation system to make that system web-based. So from a fund balance standpoint, it's, it's above our policy. Our current, our fund balance will end a year above our current policy for fund balance. But with that being said, we're, we are very concerned about the financial uncertainty in the state. Senate Bill 16 would result in severe budget reductions. Also, we're concerned about a possible pension cost shift that could result also in severe budget reductions. So the next steps after, after the budget process tonight, the finance committee monthly monitors the budget and compares to actual. Then we will begin developing the five-year projections, or PMA will be using this budget along with the 2014 audit. They also use assumptions for enrollment projections, which, which should be coming up in the next month. We use the September 30th fall housing report for enrollment projections and, and other assumptions. The five-year projections will be presented to the board on November 25, and then again on January 27, we will update them at that point. The, the 2013-14 audit report will be approved in December. And as I talked about before, we'll be doing the, the 2014 tax levy, the estimated in November, and then the final levy in December. So that's really it for summing up the budget. So I will take questions. But I know we've gone over it extensively in committee and for the past year.
The transfer from operations to capital fund?
Mm-hmm.
1.5 million approximately. I'm sorry, did you, did I miss an explanation of where that, how that came to be?
Well, we, we, the idea is that we, we continue to maintain our buildings, and the rule of thumb that we use is 1.5 million every year towards maintenance projects. We had, we could, so we just decided to do that transfer in order to separate it out and account for those maintenance projects in the capital projects fund.
I'm sorry, I just combined two ideas. There's the 1.5 million in non-operating revenue that arose, and then there was the 1.5 million transfer from operations to capital fund. And that was the explanation of the foreword that I was asking about. I'm sorry, I just bashed them together that way. I guess the, the question I have is the, the transfer from operations to capital funds, a million and a half, when we have this large capital facilities out there without a plan beyond maintenance. I think it underscores the need to have a capital plan to be integrated with our facilities maintenance plan and have a comprehensive facilities plan. And I'm hoping that's something that we can, we can work on in the next year to make it a priority, because I think it's, it's, it's something we desperately need.
I agree. We're, we're gonna start at our next finance and operations committee meeting.
Yeah, and I just, I'd like, I'd like to highlight a couple of pieces here. I mean, one, I think as Chris pointed out, and I think it's important to reiterate, that 90% of our revenue comes from local sources. Almost 85% of that comes from the local property taxpayer that funds the operations of our schools, compared to 65 or 66% on a statewide basis. Somehow, we're gonna be penalized for that if the legislature passes Senate Bill 16 and takes away approximately $5 million out of our budget of state aid. So even more of that will become locally funded. We'll get to the point where we fund almost all of our education locally. And second, I just wanna, I wanna highlight over the last two years, fiscal year 14, we added just under 43 full-time staff and a majority, almost all of them in the classroom. And, and then this year, we're adding 25, a little over 25 FTE, and 23 of them net, I think, are in the classroom. So we have come a long way to restoring some of the cuts that we had made in the past with a focus on adding staff in the classroom.
I just want to reiterate what Chris said, especially this year. There's some really good news that you produced in the budget this year, which is the adding of teaching staff at the district. The last two years, we've been adding critical teaching staff, and I don't want to get the impression that we're at the luxury point where we're just adding staff. These were critical needs that I believe we were able to finally address. ELL being one that continues to grow, the tech support, four and a half positions that we added that I think are going to address a lot of strategic initiatives in the classroom when it comes to the integration of technology and curriculum. And then a lot of new teaching positions, especially at the high school level, based on, you know, need from staff and discussions that board members had with York staff. We, we added quite a few positions at York this year to address class size issues and section issues. So a lot of good news. We hope, the danger is whether we can sustain this or not, depending again on what happens with the state and state funding. I hope this is not, we add it one year and take away the next year. We really need to emphasize to the state and the state legislatures that we need a sustainable budget over time to really make a difference for kids. The model is not to add and take away. That does us no good. We need guaranteed sustainability from the state. So that's another message, I think, we all need to be taking forward at the state level.
Are there any public comments on the budget? I, I have two public comment cards, and we'll, we'll address that after student recognition. But are there any public comments on the budget? Okay, seeing none. Then we will adjourn the public hearing on our budget for 2014-15. I need a voice vote to adjourn the hearing. No.
Do you need a motion?
I'll do it. I'll take a motion to adjourn the public hearing.
I'm so moved.
Okay, do we have a second? Okay. John's motioned, Emily seconded. Can we have a voice vote?
See, all in favor?
All in favor. Aye. Moving to the regular meeting. Moving on to student recognition. We'll start with the American Volleyball Coaches Association Team Academic Award. If you could come up to the podium. Thank you.
This is a real pleasure. This is the fourth year in a row that Coach Doughty and his team are up here to receive the American Volleyball Coaches Association Academic Team Award. The district should be very proud of these students and the coaching staff, not only for putting together a great team of volleyball players, but also setting a standard of academic excellence. And these students have, again, for four years in a row, in no small part, Mr. Doughty and his assistant coach have been able to achieve this. So I want to thank them and the team personally, and with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Doughty.
Okay. Every June, I get a little anxiety, because I've been the head coach for four years, and you'd never want that streak to end. But I have to usually wait till early August, and I'm constantly checking the website, even though I know what our GPA is when I submit. You just kinda wanna see it finalized. So when I saw that in August, it was very satisfying for me, for the players, for the parents. And then you get a little excited in the fall, knowing that you're gonna appear in front of the school board and get to hear the budget presentation. That was really quick this year, so thanks, Mr. Weldon. That was pretty cool. But seriously, you know, I came to York 12 years ago, and I'll always remember the introductory meeting to York, and I believe, it may not have been day one, but Mr. Newton came in and talked to us, the new teachers. And anyone who knows Mr. Newton knows that he's a legend, and he has a very colorful way of talking and motivating kids and even adults alike. And one of the things he talked about was his cross-country program, how proud he was of the program, attempting to beat the New York Yankees in regards to the total number of World Series. He wanted more state championships, and I think he's done that now. And I guess my goal will be maybe half of what he's done in a row in receiving these academic awards. But more importantly, I had the opportunity to talk to him yesterday. He was in the building, and I was free, and I saw him. And anytime I have the time, I take the time to sit down and talk to him. And I asked him about how his team was doing, how they did at Peoria this weekend, and I got more very colorful language in the description of how they were doing. But more importantly, he really cares about his kids, and they adore him. And when I talk about cross-country kids, I say they are the best kids that walk the hallways at York. They are awesome, awesome young men. And I think that has something to do with Coach Newton. But when I think about my guys, I would say that we may have a better group. I don't know. It's possible. When it comes to academics, I don't have to worry about my players. In the four years, I've never had to worry about a player being eligible or not. But more importantly, when I think of my guys, I enjoy being around them. They're great kids, staff, faculty, always compliment my players, and that's, that's really what a program is all about. And I will say, you know, eight of my seniors who graduated off at college, and they will be very, very much missed, but these six may be the finest student athletes I've had. So I'm very lucky to have these six players come back and lead our program forward, and great job, guys.
This is by far the best part of our meetings. If you thought budget was great, this still beats budget. It is remarkable that we can stand up here and talk about four years that this group continues to set the bar. And I think the important message here, which sometimes gets lost, is that extracurricular activities do not, this is a, do not impede academics. They support academics. They make these students more rounded and better equipped, and this team proves that every year. So I get to read this proclamation very proudly. Whereas, for the fourth year in a row, York Community High School's boys volleyball team was honored as an All-American Academic Team by the American Volleyball Coaches Association. And whereas, the AVCA, American Volleyball Coaches Association honors teams with at least a 3.3 cumulative GPA on a 4O scale, and the York team, which maintained a 3455 cumulative GPA during the 213-214 school year, is one of only 27 boys' teams in the nation to receive the award, in the nation, and only one of four in Illinois. And whereas, the effort, dedication, and attitude developed through the sport of volleyball has a lifelong effect on the members of the team and on other student athletes. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to the York Community High School, District 205, the families of these students, and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express deep appreciation and congratulations to coaches Ken Doughty and Seth Hansen, captains Jason Bowles, Joseph Duda, Sebastian Guzman, and Michael Pasternak, and team members John Copac, Robert Christinger, Sean Lyons, Zachary Mathiason, Casey McNamara, Kevin Peranto, Steve Schimmo, Evan Wendell, Jacob Wendell, and Timothy Worley for their outstanding performance during the 2014 season. And what I am going to do is I am going to hand this proclamation. Coach Doughty, I am going to ask each of you gentlemen to come, shake my hand, and go around the row and shake everyone's hand, and Coach Doughty, if you'd join us too, and I can hand you one of these proclamations. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. 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 Good job. Good job. Good job. Good job. Thank you. 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 Okay, thanks.
The next student recognition is the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Scholars, if you want to come up to the podium. Thank you.
I'm gonna introduce Principal Diana Smith, who will be doing the honors on the Kyle Braid Recipient Scholars this evening.
You can stand right here. Do you want? In front. I was thinking, I know Jim's not here, probably at the collage concert, and it's so nice to have so many wonderful things going on. I wish they could all be on separate nights, but what I was thinking, how great it is that we're celebrating everything this district values: academics, and music, and athletics, and service. There are so many wonderful things going on. We appreciate that the board is recognizing the kids, but also the adults, their parents that are here, and people like Ken Doughty, and Mr. Moran, and Ms. Mohan, and Ms. Fleming. So thank you. I also thought I should just point out, this isn't about you guys, just for one more minute, but out in the audience is Casey Burdage, who's a 2007 graduate. Can you wave? So I just happened to see her. She's here because she's doing her administrative internship for Lewis. She's a York grad, but she came here to learn all about education leadership. So I thought, what a perfect night for her to be here. I think, actually, she was at a meeting with you today, Kathy, so I'm happy to have her as well. Now it is all about you guys. So it's my pleasure, this is one of my favorite things, to introduce the new Braid Scholars every year, and we have four wonderful recipients. They're actually gonna do the talking tonight and tell you a little bit about the ranch. Our female winners are Francesca Carfannini and Katie Tuie, and our gentlemen are Mark Bernard and Jordan Les. Just one little thing about each one, one or two things. Francesca's the daughter of Scott and Aunt Jeanette Carfannini. She has a sister, Anne Marie, who's a freshman at York. She's in dance, AP English, AP Chem, enriched pre-calc. She's a freshman mentor. She's a member of the badminton team, and she's the manager of our football team, probably contributing a lot to why we're winning, so let me just say. Katie is the daughter of Sean and Ann Tuie. She's a very talented tennis player. She's in honors Chinese, honors math, AP English, and microeconomics. Her letter of reference, I loved this in the interview, was written by her brother, her older brother, which is very unusual, in letters of recommendation, and he described her as his role model in, as a leader. And I thought that was interesting, coming from a young man who just graduated and is now at the Air Force Academy in Colorado Springs. Mark is the son of Arlex and Marie Bernard. He has a sister, Alice, who is a senior at York. In his interview, he described two priorities that he wanted to tackle while he was a Braid scholar. Individual responsibility and integrity was one, and fighting racial discrimination was the other. He's currently a member of the York Varsity Football Team, our wrestling team, and our track team. He's a three-sport athlete. And then Jordan Les is the son of Margaret and Jeffrey Les. He has a sister, Sabrina, who's a sophomore at York. He's a very talented golfer. Just ask Mr. Burrell if you have about an hour to listen to all the things he'll say. He has a sister, Sabrina, who's a sophomore. I said that. His letter of reference was written by his grandfather, who said, "He's a role model and an inspiration, a leader, a doer, and a problem..." and an inspiration, a leader, a doer, and a problem solver." These are our new Braid Scholars.
JKB as a whole would like to thank the board for their continuous help in the JKB program and for sending us to the ranch this summer. We had a wonderful time and we really appreciate all the efforts you put in to continue our program. Colleen and Ken Braid met in, at U of I when they went there. They were, both grew up in suburbs of Illinois. They moved to Florida and had their son, Kyle. And Kyle was an amazing athlete and a well, really good student, and he played football.
So Kyle was a really, really good football player and was named a junior captain, and along with another boy. And their coach told both of them that they needed to do whatever it took to get bigger, faster, and stronger. And the boys took that kind of the wrong way and decided that they should take anabolic steroids to achieve this goal. And as a result of taking anabolic steroids, Kyle took his life.
And then Ken and Colleen Braid, being the people that they are, instead of asking the question, "Why do bad things happen to good people?", they ask themselves, "Why do, what do good people do when bad things happen to them?" And so after the death of their son, Mr. Braid, he woke up one morning and he had this idea to send kids just like him to a ranch out in Colorado where they can learn life skills, and they can go back into their communities and disperse all of the life skills they've learned there.
And in the 20 years that JKB has been around, they've sent over 20,000 kids to the ranch. And sadly enough, this is the last year of the JKB ranch. Mrs. Braid, she will be doing something like JKB, but just not sending them to Colorado. So for the 20,000 kids that have gone to the ranch in the past 20 years, that, that effect on, on their, their communities is amazing. They've probably affected over like a million people with us, too. We all are involved in sports and, and groups and stuff in, in our schools. And we interact with several people like a day, so we can all make a huge, huge difference in our community and, and how things work out for different, for different kids. You know, some kids aren't in the in-crowd, and we try to help them out and, you know, interact with them.
And I think we all like to talk about some of the experiences we had over at the ranch. And for me personally, the, one of the coolest things I thought about the ranch was the actual leadership training we went through. We learned stuff like helping skills, problem solving, and negotiation. And, but just to be sitting in a room with 19 other people that are mirrors of yourself that hold the same beliefs, that have the same morals and standards that you do, it's just something that I'll probably never get to experience again in my life, and I just thought that was really cool.
So going into the ranch, I was a little nervous about the people that I was going to meet and all that. But when I got there, Mama Bee and Mr. Bee were just the most amazing people that I've ever met. They're such inspirations to me, and I took so much away from them. And the rest of the staff of the ranch was phenomenal as well. And the 18 girls that I met are my best friends, and I still talk to them every day, and that's something that I will cherish forever. Like, I love our friendships. I was really nervous about the leadership training. I didn't really know what to expect. And we had over 30 hours in the week that we were there, which was a lot. And so I was just like very skeptical about everything. But Bill, the psychologist that they had who taught the classes, was just so inspirational and really knew how to relate everything that he was teaching us to our lives. And I learned so much about myself and how incorrectly I was approaching being a leader, and that, you know, like I used to say that things were really easy for me, and I did that on the high ropes course, and Mama Bee got so mad at me. But I learned that what's easy for me isn't easy for other people, and now that I'm back in school, I know that. And I'm able to change the way that I interact with other people to make that more comfortable as well.
I thought another really fun thing we did at the ranch was the high ropes course. So you go and you meet all these people, and there's 18 girls just like you. But you're like, huh, are we really going to be friends, like all this stuff? And then you join the high ropes course. And you're broken up into teams, so I was on the blue team. And so we jump on this course, and we're like, the first one took us so long. I think it took us four hours to complete. It was just two like crisscross ropes, it shouldn't be that hard. We could not do it. But by the end, you have to climb a 12-foot wall that's straight up and down. There's two people on the bottom that can help you and two people on the top. And you can pull each other up, you can push each other up, but like that's all you can do. And as soon as you go up and come down, then you're done. So I was the second-to-last to go, and so I had to pull the last person up all the, like with my other person. And so, but when we got that last person over the wall, it was probably the greatest feeling I've ever felt. You and 18 other girls have done something that is like, seems unachievable, and you did it. And it's just really important to like, remember that like we took steps to like complete this. And like, and it's always important to think what your steps are going to do and like how they impact your life. And so I just think it's really important to like embrace what you learned and like think about the steps you take along the way.
Right. Um, one thing I took away from the ranch, I've been asked this question like a thousand times since the time I've been back, by teachers, parents, friends. I really, I, I think each time I've been asked that question, I've answered it like a different way, with a different experience, because there are just so many things. One, the thing I'm going to talk about is the horseback riding. Going into it, I've never been on a horse. The first day we rode, that was, okay. First of all, my horse didn't like me at all. And it knew that I, that I, I was new to the whole riding thing. And the second day, we went up in the mountains on really small paths. And Mrs. or Mr. Braid, he, he likes to like mess with kids that he likes, or I, I, that was what he told me. So going up, up the mountain, I, I was, I was scared for my life, because my horse was, I mean, like my horse knew, knew that I was scared, so it just kept, kept like tripping and stuff. And on the last day, we went on a five-hour ride through the mountains and all that stuff. And by the end of it, I was comfortable. But I mean, what I'm trying to say is that like, Mr. Braid and like Mrs. Braid, they, they put this whole thing together to teach leaders how to get out of their comfort zone and adapt to that. So yeah, I'm probably not going to go horseback riding again, but, but I, I did learn, and I got out of my comfort zone. And we also had to do this thing called a hoedown, which I'm not a dancer. So that, that took me a while to get into, but eventually I got into that. So opening doors, you know, like she, she just taught me to let go, and like Mr. Braid just tried to scare the life out of me, as much as, yeah, so. And also, thank you for the, for like letting us go. We, we all thank the, the board and Mrs. Smith. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is very impressive. This district has been trying to assist our parents and our families in the raising of the whole child. And I think, you know, among the tools that we offer, in addition to sports and arts, is this amazing program that you all have participated in. But these are just tools. And you guys take these tools and you build something with it, and you're building leadership. And leadership is you owning your own community and you making it something better, not for yourselves, but for the people that are in your community with you. And we're very impressed with you, and we're very impressed with your participation in it, and we thank you for what you've done.
Thank you.
Whereas, the mission of the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Foundation is to identify and select young adults who exhibit leadership potential, have a strong sense of moral values, and possess the compassion necessary to improve their world. And whereas, J. Kyle Braid Leadership Camp Experience in Villa Grove, Colorado, is offered to only a select few high school students who have been screened through a highly competitive process. And whereas, York Community High School students Francesca Carfannini, Catherine Tuie, Jordan Les, and Mark Bernard were selected to participate in the J. Kyle Braid Leadership Camp, under the guidance of positive role models and trained professionals, and have developed leadership skills that promote responsible decision-making and increased self-esteem. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, District 205, the families of these students and the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to these students and their sponsor, Maureen Mohan, for this outstanding achievement. Thanks, you guys. So, as we did before, would you take your copy?
Thank you.
And shake everybody's hand. Here, come in front, if you would.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. We have one other individual to honor this evening, and again, Principal Diana Smith will do the honors for the Illinois Student Association Council.
So it's my pleasure to bring up Mr. Matt Bork, who is the son of Kevin and Lynn. He has a brother, Ryan, who's a freshman at York. He has one of the coolest schedules I've ever seen. You're going to hear all about his leadership accomplishments, but your schedule, I have to say, is one of the coolest I've seen for a senior. AP Psych, Chicago Lit, which is a great course. Then he's part of YTV Production, our TV production class. He's part of the York High Newspaper, and he squeezes in college algebra in there. Then he's part of Student Council, and he's part of the Invite to Teach Program. So he's actually helping to teach at Churchville as well. He's currently a leader in our Student Council, where he was instrumental in putting together last week's homecoming activities. I assume you got some sleep over the weekend, probably not much. But tonight, members of the board, you're honoring him for his selection as the president of the Illinois Association of Student Councils. And as president, he's going to speak to you for just a minute. He chairs all of the executive board meetings. It's really an honor to have a York student in this role. They'll be having their state convention coming up in the spring, and he'll be the chair of that convention as well. One of my favorite things that I learned about Matt in this role is that he has petitioned the governor of the state of Illinois, who I hope will listen, to actually name one week, Student Council Week. So this is Matt Bork to, to meet all of you and tell you a little bit about this honor.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. I have been, over the course of the three years that I've been working with the Illinois Association of Student Councils, I have been to over 12 workshops, state conventions, leadership trainings, and I've even had the honor to create my own at York High School for middle school students. That, first of all, wouldn't be possible without my parents for driving me everywhere and for supporting me in every decision, because honestly, this would not have happened. I also want to thank my school, because if I did not go to a school that fostered such a sense of leadership in each and every student, there is no way that I would have had the confidence to do this. And I want to thank Ms. Smith, the rest of the administration, and of course, my advisors, Ms. Fleming and Mr. Moran, because it's truly incredible. One quick thing that I want to speak about is that I have the honor to pick the state service project for the Illinois Association of Student Councils, where over 220 member schools have the opportunity to take part in. And last month, I chose the Ron McDonald House Charities, where we will be able to work, raise money, volunteer our time, and just let students get a general idea of how student service can really work. And I'm really excited for that. I look forward to all the workshops that I'll be able to attend, especially like the one that I attended this summer in Orlando for the National Association of Student Councils. I see much, many more of those to come in my future this year. I just want to thank you all. Thank you.
So Matt, that's very impressive. So congratulations to you. The Illinois Association of Student, Student Councils has been established since 1934. And you represent us for the first time as, as an executive board member. So we're very proud of you, and your parents, and, and teachers, and advisors, and everyone who has supported you. So well done. I know that you will do even more wonderful things, not just this year, but throughout your college years and life. So great start.
Thank you.
So I would like to read your proclamation. Whereas, in 1934, the Illinois Association of Student Councils was founded by a group of educators who wanted to create an organization for student leaders that would encourage them to practice the democratic process, citizenship and service, while fostering an exchange of ideas and problem-solving strategies in Illinois schools. And whereas, IASC has become one of the premier student leadership organizations in Illinois, serving thousands of students and advisors from member schools across the state, while offering opportunities for leadership and character development. And whereas, in February of 2014, Matthew Bork, York Community High School Class of 2015, was interviewed by the IASC Credential Committee and was recommended for candidacy for the position of president of the IASC Executive Board. And whereas, in May, after campaigning for three months, Matthew delivered his speech to 800 IASC convention delegates and was elected in Springfield as the 2014-2015 president of the Illinois Association of Student Councils, where he will preside over all meetings and work with the presidents of the 13 districts. And whereas, this accomplishment brings pride and prestige to York Community High School, to District 205, and to the community. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Education and Administration of the Elmhurst Community Unit School District 205 express congratulations to you, Matthew, your parents, and the Student Council Advisor, Sheila Fleming, for this outstanding accomplishment. Thank you so much, Matthew. Congratulations. This is for you.
Okay, that's the end of our student recognition. Thank you all for coming. I'll take a quick break in case anybody wants to, wants to leave, and we're going to move on to public comment.
There, there might be more budgets, so if you want to stay.
Okay, we'll move on to public comments. I have two comment cards. Andrew Ziola. Is Andrew here?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, come on up. The board will receive public comments and you, for three minutes, and just state your name. Thank you.
Hey, everyone. Andrew Ziola. I live at 732 South Washington in Elmhurst. My, one of my daughters goes to Lincoln. I'd much prefer to talk about something in regards to education. This is a little bit odd, but I know that stormwater retention or detention is on the agenda. I just want to urge all of you to hopefully approve that. I understand that the city had asked you for some help, and the residents of Washington and the streets around there, speaking on behalf of all of them, are just asking, to urge you to approve that, that project. I think there's two pilot projects, one at Madison School and one at Bryan, from my understanding. So it would help us out a lot, and also hopefully improve the playing fields for, for the kids that play in those fields, but I just wanted to, to ask for your help with that. Thanks for your time.
Okay, next, Jan Dornar. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Jan Dornar. I represent the League of Women Voters of Elmhurst, and I'm just inviting you all to come to our meeting on Thursday night. We're having a, we're calling it Community Update. We're having Mayor Steve Morley, District 205 Superintendent Dave Purno, and Elmhurst Park Board Executive Director Jim Rogers come. We're going to have each panelist give 10 or 15-minute little talk about whatever they want, hopefully what's going to happen in the near future. And then there'll be questions from the public. And hopefully, we'll have a good turnout. The League of Women Voters has a long history of keeping the citizenry aware of what is going on in local government and in, and supporting intergovernmental cooperation. So I hope to see you on Thursday. Oh, at, at the library, 7:00 PM.
Okay, are there any other public comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Paula Wolf. I live on Larch, 444 North Larch, and I actually have two properties in Elmhurst. I came because of the stormwater discussion, but I'm totally impressed. But what I saw tonight, I didn't expect it. These kids are fantastic. And I don't send anybody off to school every day, but I want the schools to be the best they can. I want to give our kids everything. I want them to have a safe environment, not just at school, but at home. And with the flood issue, they don't necessarily have a safe environment in the home. If schools can have mold, homes can have mold. So I've got grandchildren at Lincoln, Bryan, and York, and I appreciate everything they're getting, and I want them to continue getting it. But their families need help, too. And I just wanted to encourage the school board to work with Public Works, with the Park District. The city should act as a whole to help us, the homeowners, out. And, you know, I don't mind paying the taxes, as long as we're getting what we need our kids are, and like I said, a safe environment at school and at home. So, thank you, and the kids are great. Maybe I'll see one of my grandchildren up here one day.
Okay, any other public comments? Okay, that brings us to the Superintendent's Communication Freedom of Information Act.
Yes, we had two requests for freedom of information from the past meeting. One regarding specific correspondence, which was granted. The other one regarding an individual hired, which was also granted. So those were the two freedom of information requests we had since the last board meeting. Moving right on, it's my pleasure to introduce Charles Brandell. As you know, Charles is the Director of Assessment for our district. Annually, we review academic achievement with the Board of Education at a public board meeting, and Charles is here this evening to present to you a summary report of student achievement and update for the 2013-14 school year. So Charles?
Good evening. And yes, very good summary of exactly what we're here for tonight, is to review the key indicators that the Board established about three years ago that describe different facets of what we do in District 205. And these are measures that the Board decided upon to use to gauge our progress, to monitor the performance of various systems within the district. For each one of these, I am going to try to give you a little bit of a background, give you the actual numbers from last year, and then for many of them, try to provide a little bit of context to help you understand how they fit in with the bigger picture. These are all very high-level measures that we slice and dice a lot of different ways internally. So sometimes those pieces of context can help you understand how they fit in. And starting with our ACT composite, this is a measure that's actually provided to us from ACT. It's not calculated internally, and it's based on, for all of our graduating seniors, the last ACT that they took, and then averaged them all together. So it's not the highest ACT. Many of our students take more than one ACT test. They all take the ACT, or this group all took the ACT their junior year as a part of the state testing. Many of them take it again, sometimes several times. This measure is based on the last one that they took. So the bare numbers are there, and you'll notice the last couple of years, there's a number and then a number in parentheses. So let me flip over to a graph view of that and then kind of describe that. If you remember, last year, ACT changed how they started reporting this. In the past, which is what's represented by the solid line, ACT did not include students that received an extended time accommodation. Last year, and then continuing this year, they're reporting it including those students. So the dotted line represents the number when those students are included, which is the way ACT is now reporting it for all schools. That's the number that shows up in the newspapers when papers do those kinds of rankings. We made the decision, we're going to report both numbers for the next couple of years so that there's some overlap, since there's been a change in how it's reported, and then we will transition to the new way that ACT is reporting it in the next couple of years. And you'll notice, this one went from 24.7 to 24.6, which statistically is a wash. It basically stayed consistent, which, if you look back at this class, that really is about where we were expecting. Again, and one of the things, and I'll reemphasize this with other measures, we watch this over time, but we need to realize it's not the same group of kids over time. Every year that we're looking at this, it's an entirely different group of kids, and different group of kids have different strengths, different weaknesses, and we expect and do see fluctuations in this over time. What we want to see is the general trend to be upward, that our systems are improving, we're doing a better job, our kids are able to perform higher. This class of 14, if we look back at their explore scores and their PSE ACTs, we can see they performed at a similar level to the class before them, and that's what we see in this graduating class. What we are cautiously looking forward to, if you look at the bottom line, that's the explore scores for our eighth graders. And what you see is, this class of 14 is the beginning of a pretty significant upward trend in those explore scores. And we're starting to see that mirrored in the plan scores that our sophomores take. So we're a couple of years away from those students hitting this measure, but our expectation is that we're going to see this measure trend upward for the next several years. Couple other pieces of context that the subcommittee asked me to include. This is the graduating class measure for ACT since 1980. So again, I said, we're looking for that over-time trend going upwards. You know, you see dips and peaks in there, but there's a very obvious trend upward. And that black line in the middle separates, previous to 2002, ACT was not given to all students. Only students that selected to take it because they knew they needed to use it as a college entrance exam took the ACT before 2002. Since 2002, it's been universally administered to all of our students as a part of state testing during their junior year. So even though you saw a dip in 2002, when we started administering it to all students, we've since progressed, and now York's ACT scores are the highest that they've ever been. Another piece of this, or a piece of context, if you look at the proportion of students that are performing at the highest level, so at a 30 or greater on that junior-level ACT, last year, we were at 18.2%, which, again, you see a pretty dramatic trend upwards on that. And just to give you a piece of context, a score of 30 or higher puts them at the 95th percentile nationally. So we're pushing close to 20% of our juniors last year scored at the 95th percent or higher on the ACT. All right, earlier, I showed you, we were talking about explore and plan and how those play together, and we're also talking about the fact that that ACT measures a different group of kids every year. One of the things that it's important for us to do is to not just look at those snapshots every year of whatever kids are at that grade level, but actually monitor and make sure that students are progressing over time within the district. And this is one of, this measure is one of the ways we do that. We look at growth from explore to that junior ACT, so how the score has changed. But this is a cohort measure, so it's the exact same students from eighth grade until their junior year. So move-ins, move-outs are all peeled out of this. They have to have been with us in eighth grade and still been with us at the end of their junior year to be included in this measure. This one, we can see dipped this year. We'd seen a dramatic increase to that 7 and 7.2, and this is where the start of that climb in explore happened. And we can see that the ACT went up, it just didn't climb as much as the explore score climbed. So the difference between the two, the actual growth between the two, is actually a little bit lower this year than it was previously. AP participation, this is a homegrown measure that the Board devised as they were coming up with these, as how we wanted to look at performance in AP. If you look at what the College Board provides us, they provide us with percent of students that get a three or higher, the number of students that tested, the number of exams that they took. The Board decided that they wanted to emphasize more students having access to and having the experience of a college-level class while they were still in high school. So we went with a participation, which is just for our sophomores, juniors, and seniors, what percentage of those students who are eligible to be in an AP class actually took one during that school year. This measure climbed from 1112 to 1213 and remained consistent from two years ago to last year. Now, just as an aside, one of the things, when you look at the AP numbers, it would have been easy to say, oh, they gave fewer tests, they had fewer students testing, that's a downward trend, what's going on? And it really was, just because we had fewer students in that eligible group, which is one reason why I like this participation measure. It's giving us a truer picture of what students and how many students are taking advantage of those courses. Graduation rate was up this year to 95.2. This is a formula that's defined by the State Board of Education, so we don't have any control over that. It's also reported out on our school report cards, and 95.2 is certainly a high graduation requirement. It actually hits the five-year goal that the Board had set a couple of years ago, and I'm sure will be part of our discussion as we kind of reformulate some of these. New Century Participation was an attempt, when these were set up, to try to capture something more than math and reading and the things that the state collects and the things that they make us report on. It was an acknowledgement of the importance of the comprehensive education that students get in District 205. So rather than just looking at those stock math and reading numbers that the state provides to us, we wanted to capture a broader picture. So this is what percentage of our students are taking a world language, taking math electives, taking science electives beyond their requirements to graduate. And this one, we have seen climb 10% in the last couple of years, from 64 to 69 to 74%. So again, it's important to measure this and important to report out on it. It's very easy to tunnel vision into, you know, math and reading and those scores, and if those are the only things we look at, then that conveys a sense of that's what's important. So it's, it's good that the Board has included this, and I'm sure we will continue to find ways to measure this and report out on it. Fine Arts Participation is another piece of that. At the elementary school, we measure that as enrollment in band and orchestra, and that is up a little bit from last year. In the middle schools, we start to include choir, and that's actually down a little bit. And at the high school, it's enrollment in art and performing arts electives, and that has actually steadily climbed over the last couple of years. And this is one that I know from the subcommittee conversation that we want to look at, are there better ways to capture this, that it almost may still be too narrow and too dependent on things that are outside the control of the district and outside the control of the quality of the program that's being administered. Achievement Gap data is measured in a couple of different ways. At the elementary and middle schools, we look at the spring MAP results, because that is our main assessment system at that level. At the high school, we look at those 11th-grade ACT results that are a part of, have been a part of Prairie State. So if we look at the elementary results, we see in some subgroups where those are declining, our ELL gap has actually risen a little bit, and the gap for Hispanic students has remained relatively consistent. I included the N equals value, is the number of students in each one of those groups last year. And again, it's important to realize, for this, we're looking at elementaries, and we administer the MAP for second, third, fourth, and fifth graders. So when we're comparing year to year, it's not the same students over time. Okay, a fourth of the group, the fifth graders moved out of that group, and a new group of second graders came in each year. So that's one thing to keep in mind. And it's also important to, not as much at the elementary level, but we're going to see it at the middle and high school levels, that those sample sizes, the number of students, the smaller that group of students is, the more likely we are to see fluctuations in those results. So for elementary reading, that's what we're seeing. For math, these results pretty well mirror what we're seeing at the elementary level. We've got some significant decreases in the gaps. For some groups, there are a couple of groups, namely the ELL and Hispanic groups, that are maintaining relatively constant gaps. At the middle school, the results are a little more mixed. Our low-income students, our IEP students are trending towards smaller gaps. Hispanic and African-American and ELL gaps have been increasing. Again, it's important to remember, you know, if we look at that ELL group, 25 students, and at the middle school level, we're trading out a third of those students every year. So a third of those students are new to the group each year. So again, we are more likely to see fluctuations in that. Our math results, again, are mixed. We're seeing a reduction for our IEP group, and actually, we've seen increases over the last three years for the rest of those groups. If we turn to the high school, again, this is looking at the ACT and a gap in the composite score. Again, we're seeing mixed results, and this one, it's even more important to realize that it is a different group of kids every year, because this is only administered at the 11th grade. So it's the students that were in 11th grade each one of those years. And again, we do have to pay attention to those sample sizes. When you have a smaller sample, you're much more likely to see changes in those scores. All right, our On Track for College and Crew Readiness is something that we internally defined and developed, so I'm going to take a moment to sort of describe that. We did some statistical work to try to tie together the MAP system that we use at the elementary and middle schools, and the EPASS system, Explore, Plan, and ACT that we use at the high school, so that we could understand how a score on a MAP test related to a score on an explore or an ACT test. And what we were able to do is to define a performance level at each grade that corresponded to a particular ACT score. And the ACT score that we chose was 24, that we would like as many students as possible, and set a long-term goal of 70% of students to score at a 24 or higher on the ACT, because that's a score that starts to open up more opportunities and more doors for more highly selective colleges and universities. So these are the MAP scores that correspond to being able to achieve a 24 in the ACT your senior year. And every time I put this graph up, I take 30 seconds and I have to do a disclaimer. This is a measure that was designed to measure a large group of students and the progress of the system as a whole. It was never designed for and shouldn't be used to gauge whether a specific second grader is going to get a certain score on their ACT. You know, whenever I show these to PTAs and parents, I tell them, please don't go home and pull up your son or daughter's MAP score and say, you know, your graph says they should be at 190 and they're at 185, are they not going to be able to get into a good school? It wasn't designed for that, it doesn't do that. There's too much variability, the confidence interval is too wide, and we all know there's way too much that happens between second grade and 12th grade to be able to make those kinds of predictions based on what a second grader was able to do when they sat down in front of the computer for 45 minutes and took 45 minutes and took a specific test. It is, however, a valuable measure for us as a system, to be able to look at, are we moving kids to higher levels of achievement over time? So, as an aside, and a piece of that context, I pulled a cohort for last year's fifth graders. So these are students that are actually in sixth grade now, and went back over their achievement since they were in second grade. So on this graph, the kind of smear, each one of those is made up of dots, and each dot represents a student. There are about 500 of them that are in this cohort, that were with us during second, third, fourth, and fifth grade. The black line represents the benchmark score that indicates that they would be on track for a 24. And that score goes up every year, and our goal is to get more kids over that line, even though it's going up every year. And you can see that we have done that with that cohort. That cohort started out with 27% of students scoring at that level. By the time they left elementary school, 50% of them were scoring at that level. Now, that provides an important piece of context, because when we look at the actual measure, last year for reading, we were at 41.7 at the elementary schools, and for math, we were at 55.1. And the reading score goes down from the previous year. And I just wanted to provide that cohort measure to be able to explain that what that means is not that we lost ground, that more kids fell below the line. What it means is that we weren't as successful at moving kids over the line as fast last year as we had been the year before. So it's not a losing ground, it's just we weren't gaining ground as fast last year as, as we were two years ago. Which, again, the fact that it goes down is something to look at. Why is that happening? What are we doing? What was going on with that group of students? But it's not a, "We lost ground." Same measure at the middle school, and we see the same thing. In reading, we dip down a little bit. Math, we were actually up a little bit, although really statistically, the last three years have been pretty constant. And then if we look at the high school, this is from the junior year ACT, it's the percentage of students that scored at a 23 or higher, and we were at 59.1% last year, which is up from the year before, but about the same as we were two years ago. And last measure. And one of the things that I think has, has kind of spurred some, some significant changes in the way we look at things, is, is how well are our students growing? And it kind of keys into that graph I was showing with the cohort. How well are we doing as a system at getting kids to grow as much as they can? And the measure before looks at, have we gotten them to a certain point? What this measure looks at is wherever they started, NWA gives us a typical growth number, which is, for that student at that age and that starting point, what is the national average amount of growth that you would see for that student? And what we're measuring is how many of our students meet or beat that national average, typical growth. And what we've seen at the elementary school the last three years are some pretty significant and dramatic increases in that growth. And this is one of those measures that, if you remember that smear of dots, you know, there may be students that are well below the line, and they may have grown significantly during the year, but if they didn't reach that line, they're still not going to be included in that measure. They're still not going to be one of the kids that met that benchmark or higher. What this measure does is look at how well are we getting students across the spectrum to grow. And again, I think it's important to recognize that we've seen significant improvement in that over the last three years. Same trends at the middle school level, where we've seen significant improvement in the number of students that are hitting that typical growth number every year. Typically, in this presentation at this point, we would talk about AYP results. Because of the waiver that the U.S. Department of Education gave Illinois last year, AYP is not part of the vocabulary now. They are no longer designating students as meeting or not meeting AYP. This piece, I spent a decent amount of time last year describing how it was calculated and what it is. The State Board of Ed has created this growth measure, which in theory is a good idea to look at how students are growing over time. And again, it's that last measure that we're using, that typical growth measure. Theoretically, it's that same kind of idea. The implementation is problematic, especially right now where the tests that they were being based on have changed every year for the last several years. So you're measuring growth between two tests that are based on completely different standards, which I won't editorialize anymore. But basically, the way it works is they assign them an achievement level, and then they look the next year at what achievement level they were. Whether they stay the same, move up, move down, is worth a certain number of points. So each student in the school gets a score, and then they average all those scores for each building. You know, our scores are well above the state average. For last year, we haven't seen the state averages this year, but we don't anticipate that they're dramatically different from last year. Mainly, I report this not because it's something that is truly valuable to us, or something that we can actually pull something that's useful from, but it is a measure that's going to be reported. It's something that the papers are going to use to rank schools. Now, all of those KPIs that three years ago, we spent a lot of time and effort in trying to iron out and come up with what we thought were truly good measures, most of them are going to change. Because of changes to all of our assessment systems that are being, that are coming to us from the outside, we are going to have to adapt how we measure those things moving forward. So just to give you a little bit of insight into why that is, many of those measures that we just talked about were based on that junior year ACT that was a part of the Prairie State exam. The Prairie State exam is no more. Illinois is shifting over to the PARK test. For, this year, they have, the state board has committed to still funding a universal ACT for all high school juniors. The future of that is a little bit fuzzy, whether that will continue or not. They, the plans that they have put out right now show it continuing this year and maybe next year, and after that, it gets a little more complicated, which they may go to a voucher system, which forces us into a Saturday administration, not a during-the-school-day administration. So they seem to be taking steps back away from that universal ACT for all juniors. But even though it is still going on this year, they've moved it from the end of April to the beginning of March. So it's seven weeks earlier in the school year, which is going to have an impact on scores. It just, it's seven weeks less of instruction, so there's going to be a discontinuity in the data there that we're going to have to work around, and it's going to impact any of our KPIs that rely on that junior year ACT moving forward. And we're also going to have to think ahead. If two or three years out, there is no more junior year ACT for all students, how are we going to adapt to that? The other change, I mentioned PARK. PARK is a third grade through eighth grade and 11th grade assessment this year. We talked about this last year, the amount of time it's going to take, the time out of classroom, the impact on our technology. We, as a district, made a decision last spring because of the time that's going to be committed to the PARK assessment, that we are not going to administer the MAP assessment in the spring. If we had administered the MAP assessment, it truly would have been four weeks of PARK, three weeks of MAP, and then four weeks of PARK at the end of the school year. And it was, it was too much of an impact on instructional time. So even though we have built systems based on that, we felt we had to take a step back from doing that spring MAP assessment. We will continue to do the fall and the winter this year, but we'd lose that spring, which all of our elementary and middle school KPIs are based on that spring administration. So we are going to have to go back and revisit those and reformulate those. The administrative team, the principals, are going to be working on that over the next couple of months, and will be bringing some recommendations to the CNI Subcommittee in November, I believe is our schedule. And then we'll be bringing those back to the full board to consider how we're going to adapt and change those. And that brings us to the questions.
Are there any questions?
No?
Well, I have some. Oh, go ahead.
I was reluctant to talk, because we did go through it at the committee, and it was, you know, in-depth. There's a lot of really, really good news that I think people are getting value for their tax dollars in District 205, and that's, I want to make sure that I say that and say that out loud, that typical growth measure is just, I think, evidence that there is a systemic longitudinal approach that, that seems to be working. The same thing with the EPAS growth. My concern is a gap in the assessment of the high school. We see the ACT, we see the ACT growing. We see that the 30 or greater score appears to be increasing faster than the composite, which, for me, is a matter of concern, because it tells me there's someone, there's another group that's not doing so well. I noticed that when we measured the gaps, we only had one measure of gaps, and that was PSAE. Whereas, I'm wondering if, is it possible to have some of the EPAS growth aggregated into our, our gaps analysis? I don't know if that's possible.
Oh, it's absolutely possible, and we do it internally.
Okay.
Yeah, we break down, yes, all of those, those EPAS results, those year-by-year results, get looked at from that gap perspective. It wasn't something that we identified as a KPI to report out to the board, but that's absolutely being done.
My concern is, you know, while we see the gaps, and the other element is, this is that gaps thing, and you don't always want to focus on the negative, but, I mean, the rest is going pretty well. But that one is a matter of concern for, for me, that the gaps are, at the elementary level, are declining. At the middle school, we had three of five categories increasing in literacy, and four of five increasing gaps in math. And we only have one measure at high school of the gaps, and that is varied, as you mentioned. And I'm just wondering, is there a way for us to, to measure gaps a little better and, and focus on, on that at the high school?
And I guess I would say, I think the high school is very focused on that, and looking at and trying ways to address those gaps with those different populations. Again, I hate to repeat what we did in the Subcommittee, but not everybody was there. There are some of those gap measures, specifically the ELL gap measure, that I think as a part of this reformulating our KPIs, we really do need to spend some time and take a close look at how we're measuring that. The way it's being measured now really is not an indication of the quality of the program, it's more an indication of, especially at the middle school and high school level, what ELL students have moved in, and what the capacity of those students who have moved in. At the elementary and high school level, students that are ELL are not students that started with us in kindergarten, first grade. They're students that have moved in from outside, so it really is more an indication of that. The other problem with that is, students are in that ELL group because they've been screened and identified as having deficits in their ability to read and speak and understand English. And then we give them a test that's written in English, and there's a gap, and, and we act like we're surprised that there's a gap. We've given them an assessment written in a language that we already know they don't understand and can't operate fluently in, and then, you know, we're shocked that they're not scoring at the same level as their peers that have only spoken English, and that's their only language. So I think there are other ways we can get at the quality of our ELL program. You know, we can look at students that have transitioned out of ELL, and are they performing at the level of their peers? We can look at a rate of progress within the ELL program of acquiring the English language and those skills. So for some of those, I think, it's really the measure rather than something wrong that's happening that's causing that gap to increase. You know, for others, you know, I joked with Dr. Fitzgerald today, if I had the, if I had the answer to the gap, then I'd be sitting somewhere warm and, you know, with my feet up. You know, that is an ongoing issue. You know, there, you know, we have to realize that there's more things affecting a student's achievement level than just what we do in the school building. And we have to get better at coping with students that are coming with different backgrounds and different understandings, and what are things that we can do, which is an ongoing process. There is no silver bullet, there's no magic answer that we just haven't tried the right thing yet. You know, and one of the things, as you know, when you look at our demographics, you know, our demographics have been changing, so the district is adapting to some of those changes.
Just one concrete example I think I need to point out, just how new students affect the gap. We have enrolled this fall six students at one school that are from a Central American country, that have just arrived in this country. Those six students are seventh graders, they have not been in school for five years. So they are coming with not English, even close to their second language, and they're coming with no formal schooling for five years. So if you add those six students to our achievement gap group, that has a dramatic effect on what that percentage looks like. And yet, those are the kinds of students we are seeing more and more of in the system, coming into Elmhurst 205. And those students are hard to program for. And so, you know, just to keep that in mind, and as Charles said, we need to rethink how we evaluate that ELL population and how successful, or not successful we are, but I think it may be more tracking the students who transition out than it is about new students who arrive, because we really don't control that. And we get students like these students late in their school career, who we have to program for.
You were very persuasive in saying that we need to measure ELL different, and perhaps it's better to drop that gap off. But I think we also have to look a little bit closer at the other gaps that are, are going on. And you raised some, some good points, again, about, you know, special ed and, and low-income, our demographic has really changed, low-income wise in Elmhurst. Probably not apparent to everybody, but it is significantly changed. And there are challenges, but I think we need to keep an eye on the challenges, and we need to keep track of them in high school, because high school's our last, our last chance to affect these kids. The last, for most of them, it's the last time we have a chance to do something. And that's why I'm encouraged, the State Board funding universal ACT, you know, it's a sigh, keep playing. But I'm going to keep playing it about that, because I think it does change lives. So, that's all I have.
Yeah, no, and I agree. And I think, you know, our district and all of the suburban high schools are, in the groups that, that we associate with are on that exact same page, that are really pushing the State Board to continue that universal ACT testing, because we've all seen the difference it can make.
Are questions? Margaret?
I too want to talk about what great news this is. And I also want to focus on, there always is broom for an chief improvement. I, first, I want to look at, it was slide number 11, they talked about the AP participation. And I think the key piece here, and I think it's wonderful, and it talks about the value of our, our education. I think it's wonderful that we have so many students, I'm sorry, the slide right before that, thank you. It's wonderful that we have so many students who are participating in taking AP classes. And also, I think it's important to note that we have so many students who are passing, our pass rate is also very high. So I think those two pieces are important to make note of. So that's my first point. The other point, and I think you summed it up, it was about the achievement gaps. And the achievement gaps, they do concern me. And I think your point that you brought up is there are some things that we can't control. And that's a very fair statement. And while we can't control them, I think it's important that we are continually asking the question, what can we do? We will never be able to, perhaps we'll never be able to erase these gaps, but if we ever get content and attempt to explain away what these gaps are or are not, I think it will be a disservice to our, our community. And I know that's not what we're attempting to do, but I just want to say let's continue to be diligent or continue, yes.
Diligent.
Diligent, diligent, to try to decrease these gaps at all levels, through all different methods.
And, and yeah, and I absolutely agree and, and I think you stated it very well and hopefully what I said didn't come off as explaining it away. You know, it, that's, and that's why it's a KPI. That's a, a very vital thing for us to, to watch and continue to work at decreasing those gaps.
I'm going to do Karen, okay, Emily, then Karen.
Okay, the ISBE school growth measure, I find that very confusing. Now, is that one of our KPIs?
No. I, I simply reported it because what we've typically done in the past is we, when I do this summary, is I go through the KPIs and then I go through the state measures that are going to be in the paper. And so we want you to see them and hear an explanation of them before they show up in a paper.
And then they go on this report card, right?
Correct.
That every school, and it's broken down by school?
Correct.
Okay. Does that show multiple years? So will that show, the report card will show their growth from year to year?
I'm trying to remember. I think the new report card does show at least a couple of years.
Right.
Which for this growth measure, that's all they've got. There, it was on, it was a branding measure last year and then now they have this year. And I don't know what they'll do next year since it's a complete shift. They won't be able to have it next year because it's a completely different test.
Right.
So this year's park will be a baseline for the new growth measure moving into the future.
And it was what, the ISAT score was what they've used last year and this year?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, which again, you know, as, as I stated, they're, they're looking at growth from the ISAT that was during the 12-13 school year, which was still 70% the old Illinois standards. And then they're comparing growth to last year's ISAT, which was 100% Common Core standards. And I haven't seen any indication of how they equalize the scores on those. It's just, there's, there's a lot of problems with measuring growth on two completely different assessments unless you've done a lot of work to, to norm and equalize the scores on those.
Okay. And so the numbers you were using, you said those were internal because ISBE has not yet released the official growth score for 2014.
Correct.
And when will that be?
It'll be at the end of October.
End of October, okay.
Which, yeah, so, you know, we calculated these because we've got the same numbers the state does, although they're a little bit secretive on some of how they calculate this. So some of those may change. Last year when we did it internally and then compared it to the state's numbers, there were a couple of buildings that changed a fraction of a point, which made it round differently. But there shouldn't be any dramatic changes from, from what you're seeing.
Okay.
So thank you, Charles, and the whole team on putting the, this information together for us. It, it's wonderful, it's good to see the trends, it's good to see from a district level, you know, how we can, I don't want to say slice and dice the district, but you know, you can see overall and then really look at the uniformity, if you will, and, and to, you know, look at programming across all students, not just like labeled or categorical, but, so it's valuable for us to see, but I know that it's also valuable internally to help us focus and be efficient and effective in delivering what the students need for the growth. And that's really what it's, you know, what, what it's about is to grow the students, not just to report out the numbers, so that's good. So thank you, it's, you know, it's very valuable to us and I know that it's valuable to, you know, the community, so thank you. I kind of wanted to highlight, because I think this is important too, that I didn't know at first, kind of, you know, the operational, you know, components behind all of this and what really we do with it. So I think that it, it's important for the community to know, kind of what we do. And you alluded to it as you were talking and answering questions, but correct me if I state this wrong, okay? But I really wanted to highlight on what we do with the information. So really, we look at it district-wide, we look at it building and transition, you know, from building to building or grade level. And we also look at it from success and transition, from grades and subject matter. And I think that's really important for everyone to know. You know, so we look at those elements, okay?
Yeah, absolutely, there, you know, again, these are high-level measures, you know, that we designated as a, a good way to, to get a sense of the direction of the district over time. You know, we, and I think I have used that term slice and dice this, you know, 100 different ways, looking at, you know, not just district and, and building, but down to grade level, down to classroom, down to individual students and, and watching them over time. You know, the, the buildings have data meetings where they sit down and, and look at the, you know, a grade level sits down and looks at their grade level data
Right.
to see how they are trending over time, but then also dig into individual students to, to problem solve around, okay, we've been trying this with this student, you know, what kind of results are we seeing? How is that paying off? Is this something we continue? Do we need to try something different? So yes, this is all, you're exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
It's, it's looked at on many different levels in many different ways within the district.
Okay. And the, the other point that I think is important to highlight is, we may have what I'll call categories or labels of achievement groups. But we also look at what, in that growth, we look at what do students need? And so we, we use those same programs, if you will, or teaching and learning for more students than just are necessarily in that group when we find out, you know what I mean? If there's something that makes students in a particular, like, ELL's a bad example, but in some of the other groups, it might be like you said, all the social, emotional, the whole student. And we use that for all of our students. So I think that's important to highlight too. So, so it's not, I know that we want to improve the achievement gaps in, in the subgroups that we label, but we also use it for all students when it's applicable.
Yes, yeah, and you're exactly right. You know, there, there are times when we try something based on something the data is telling us for a specific group of students, you know, and as, as we see that that's something that works with that group, then it, it spills over into the system as a whole. You know, it's not pigeonholed to just that group of kids, that this only works with that group of kids. There are a lot of things that then we can improve the overall system from things that we have done with smaller groups.
And I think that's valuable to, to know that that's how we work on it. I also wanted to highlight the AP participation in the past, you know, the testing. And I know that I was pretty adamant in the beginning that we needed to look at both of them because we can increase the number of students that participate, but what we also want to do is show that growth and that comprehension, so I wanted to make sure I pointed that out and said thank you in addition. I really like the new century participation too, so that we're looking at, you know, that, that comprehensive education because this community is, you know, values it and, and we, you know, spend taxpayer dollars for that. So I am appreciative that we're measuring it and looking at it and valuing it internally. And I really think that that was it, thanks.
Thank you.
Sure. And Charles, thank you. I mean, I think back to when we first joined the board and I think you first took the position that we, the, I think the board, just as we joined, created and, and it's just night and day in, in what we have to talk about now than versus what, I know our first discussion like this was like. So thank you. I, I also want to make sure that, that we all understand that I think, and you know, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I mean, I love math and I love science, but this is an art. We have a lot more indicators now, but to, I, I think to, to believe that this is in any way prescriptive, it, it's not as easy as turn, you know, turn the crank and I can move this number. You know, there were, these aren't perfect and this is one of the, the holy grails in education right now is how do you measure progress? And I think that we, this is tangible and this is what we can put our fingers on and it'll evolve over time and it'll get better over time. And we can't wait for the perfect, this is a fantastic way to start and we continue to evolve it. Yeah, that said, you know, this data is indicative and directionally correct over time. It's, it's, it's valid in large sample sizes. We have issues, as you pointed out, with assessments changing over time and how to, you know, how do you norm it and that kind of stuff? And, and so I guess what I'm trying to get at is, this tells us directionally kind of what's happening. And maybe this is handled in committee a bit, but it would be helpful at the board table to, to talk about what are the influencers, what are the drivers, what's moving these numbers? I mean, we talk a lot about what, what is, again, what is happening best we can based upon, you know, certain data sets, but you don't have to be absolutely correct to the, to the decimal place to have an understanding of whether we've changed the shape of the line or not, as you've, you know, you've talked through. And I think it would be really helpful, you know, at, at a future meeting to talk about some of the things that we're doing to influence the movement in these numbers, particularly, and I'll go back to myself, my, my, my finance roots, but particularly as we get into budget season, we talk about what do we fund and what have we funded, what's working, what should we put more money behind? Because that's one of the few things that, that we have control. We're not the educators, we're not the experts, that's you guys. But, but taking the data, marrying it with what you're doing and helping us be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars and allocating it to things that have the highest impact. So I would love to take this a step further at some point and talk about some of the major things. And I know when we first started, we said, I don't know yet. We need to get some data, we need to get some trends, and you're probably still early. But it would be nice to start having those discussions, particularly as we get behind where we're, we as a board are allocating resources, so I'd just like to, to throw that out there.
Yeah, and I think that's, that's probably something certainly, you know, as I, I talked about earlier, we're really going to have to revisit all of these KPIs and how we've defined them. And I think we can certainly roll that into the conversation of, you know, as we look at some of these that we've seen very consistent trends with, go back to what are, what do we see as having been the drivers of those things? And again, we, you know, we already do that and, and we'll see as, you know, in the subcommittee and when it comes to the, the full board, it, it's honestly nearly an impossible task to, to zero in and say, you know, we made that one change in programming and, you know, and that drove an explore score, that drove an ACT score, you know, we're never going to be able to distill it down to that, partially because of, you know, as I spoke about earlier, there, there's so many different influencers going on. But partially because, you know, we're, we're never actually doing a controlled experiment where one thing changes and everything else stays the same. But I think we can certainly give some indications of, you know, these are things that we've seen that have influenced, you know, these scores, but you know, just overall the achievement. And again, you know, these are, are high-level measures, we have, there's many other things that we watch over time, you know, down to, you know, student performance on benchmark tasks around specific standards. So there's, there's finer-grain data that we can use to, to get us closer and, and at least help us build kind of a short list of, these are the things that we see as being truly influencing the level of achievement.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, at a high board level, I mean, I can tell, I mean, take literacy, for example. I mean, the, the literacy program that my freshman in college had when she went through the elementary versus my sixth grader now has improved remarkably. I mean, you can see it in, in both my kid, but, but in how the teachers talk and how they teach. And that was an effort that I think we, as a district, had put a lot of resources behind a while ago. And so, yes, you need multiple data points over an amount of time, but, right, it's not, coincidence is not causality and it's not formulaic that said, we did that and that worked. But, you know, there are two or three or four things that, major initiatives that we funded or things that we've done that, you know, we say, hey, we value this and we want to, you know, we want to put some resource, not, not the, in the weeds, okay, I did X, Y, and Z, it's, we overall focused and added resources to this kind of thing. And that's, that's the, ELL is a focus area for us and I know that, you know, we need to put resources behind it, we've put some resources behind it. But, you know, again, talking about what we're doing and what we can do more of, what maybe we shouldn't do as much of potentially, but again, we, we kind of, we're resource allocators here. And so help us to put those resources to the highest and best use.
Right, you know, and I think we can absolutely do that. Thank you.
If you want to. You know, David, we're going to start, we have, thanks to John McDonough, we have a sample resolution that we would like to put up on the screen. The board wants to discuss this this evening and that is why it is under the superintendent's communication this evening. So this is a starting point of a draft, this is in response to the city of Elmhurst, who is asking the Board of Education for support in their storm water efforts on detention. And this is a starting point this evening on a sample resolution. If the board comes to consensus on a resolution this evening, we will then, we have a placeholder later in the agenda under the resolution to actually vote on the resolution that you finalized this evening. So with that, I will just open up to the board, to Shannon, to lead the discussion on, on where this goes with the board.
Okay, so we have a brief introduction. Yesterday, John McDonough and I met with two aldermen, Jim Kennedy and Danny Palomski, to review where we at with, with stormwater in, in the school district. So really reviewing our goals, objectives, getting on the same, making sure we're on the same page. And we continue to focus on Madison, the Madison property. And I believe it's in the best interest of all parties to focus on one property for now and work out a resolution, work out our term sheet that will be part of an intergovernmental agreement. And then at the same time, the city can work with their engineers to further develop the concept that we have right now for Madison into a more detailed plan. So the concept we have from the city for, for Madison is about 5% to 10% done. So I think there's dual paths here that we can be working on our terms of what we need to have and the city can work on their engineering plans. So that's really, do you have anything else to add from, from yesterday's meeting? Any, anything I missed?
The message from the city is, is clear, is they want some assurance that we're, we're going to work with them and that we're going to get somewhere before they start spending money on engineering design, which is what they need to do to get this. I think they quoted that it would be the spring before they would have a design put together for, for Madison location, something that we could hook into an intergovernmental agreement and, and approve. And I think we need to work, as you said, I think that's perfect, to work at it and parallel, parallel paths. And the purpose of this resolution is to let them know, yes, we are a willing participant, partner in this. There are some difficult discussions to be had, there is a definite need of stormwater now, there is a definite attempt by the city, good faith attempt, to make it work with the way our schools look now. But as I've said before, and it's not everybody's view, but it's mine, is that at the same time, we need to balance that against some of the long-range needs of the school district. You know, we can name the litany of schools that, you know, were closed and the properties disposed of. And then the next time the wave of, of enrollment rose, people are saying, well, jeez, why did we get rid of the properties? Why, you know, and so we need to make sure that we are addressing the immediate needs, but at the same time, reserving some of our long-term possibilities to meet the educational needs. And that's going to be a very difficult, difficult process, but I think we can do it because we need to do both. We need to do stormwater, we need to do education in the future.
So with that, we should review the resolution and get comments and, you know, we, this is the first time we're looking at this. And, you know, we, this is the first time we're looking at this, so it's, you know, in draft form. Thanks, John. The board works well when we put something forward, and then poke holes in it and make it better. So thank you, John. So I, with that, I'll take comments on, you know, on this document. And Emily, do you want to start?
My first question was about, two, three, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, the ninth paragraph down, where it says, "Whereas the school district has been willing to cooperate and has been eagerly awaiting the arrival of either more developed concept plan or other more developed design for the project, or an outline or draft of an intergovernmental agreement." Didn't we get that from the city? I just want to make sure that this part was accurate. Did we get that already, the, their draft of an intergovernmental agreement? I mean, it came by email, right? So I just want to make sure that this was still accurate.
That was sent to board members at the last meeting.
Yeah, I just didn't know if John had drafted this maybe before we got it. I wanted to make sure it was accurate.
It was written about at the same time.
This was drafted just before that arrived.
Okay.
And it arrived shortly after this came up. So probably that does need to be changed in a way. I know Karen had a comment about it as well.
I mean, we could keep in the part about the developed concept plan, but as far as the outline or draft of an intergovernmental agreement, if we've gotten it, just take that out.
I agree with that.
So really, what we want to state here is that we want to have an intergovernmental agreement. So what we're trying to do with this resolution is just outline what we received and what we didn't, or, I mean, I, we really want to make sure that we outline, or that we articulate, that one very important component, as Shannon said earlier, and you agreed with John, is that we have an intergovernmental agreement. That's what we've always said. And I just want to make sure that we don't delete this.
This says we're, I know, this says that we are anxiously, eagerly awaiting the arrival.
And that's my point. I wanted to make sure we don't delete this entire paragraph.
No, I don't want to delete the whole paragraph.
We can just take out those words, I agree.
What I'm proposing is taking out, or an outline or draft of an intergovernmental agreement that would outline the conditions under which the city intends to use the school district properties.
That's somewhere else.
The resolution, the last part, is what we're asking, what we're resolving to do. This is just whereas, this is just stating, statement of what's happened already. So if it's not factually correct, that it's already happened, and you can remove it. But it doesn't mean that we're not asking to have an intergovernmental agreement negotiated. That shows up in bullet number two in the resolution.
Okay.
And after the comma, we'll omit the rest of the sentence.
Yeah, is it, is it okay? Oh, I'll wait for that.
So do you want just, just that?
No, everything after the comma.
Right. And then on that same paragraph, while we're here. I was going to say, whereas the school district is willing to cooperate and is awaiting the arrival. I, and I talked to John about that, I just think that's a little simpler, and also shows that we are eager. I mean, if you really went the eagerly, that's fine. Well, and is is more of a present state, that we still are willing and have been, and, okay. So the school district is willing to cooperate and is awaiting the arrival. Yes. Is awaiting. Does anybody want to disagree with that, or? Okay, sorry, and my last comment was back up on the third paragraph. It says, "Whereas the school district's history of collaboration includes the 2004 intergovernmental agreement, which provided the school district's required approval of the extension for 14 additional years of the city's tax increment financing program for both sales and property taxes in the downtown area of the city, and in 2012 amended the city's commitments in that agreement to permit the city to fund the Han Street development using North Tiff funds." And, while I agree that that's accurate, I just don't know if it's helpful in this document or really relevant, so I was going to propose just removing that paragraph. Not disagreeing with it, but I thought it lost a little focus.
I'm fine with that change. Everybody, okay.
All right.
All right, you can omit paragraph three. Their comments. Go ahead, Chris.
I just, I want to make sure that everybody understands. I mean, this is a bit amusing to me, in that over the past at least year, we've been doing all of this. And we've handed the city, you know, a design plan for Madison, and asked them to get with their engineers and work on it. And I get that the city, and I fully respect that the city needs this in order to start spending some real money, but I just want to make sure that everybody understands that this isn't the start of something. It is the continuation of collaboration and cooperation that has been going on for well over a year. So I just want to make that point.
Are there any other comments? I have one. Paragraph where it states August 4th, 2014. My suggestion would be to either only state the property at Madison or state no properties. I think it muddies the, what we're trying to do, we're focusing on Madison, and we don't, we're not talking about Jackson, we're not talking about Bryan right now. So it, either Madison or no properties is my suggestion. Does anyone have a comment on that?
Just a response, that just states a fact. That was the thing that they did do. So it's just historical fact. They passed this resolution that did that. But the thing, if you go down below the now-therefore to what we're actually doing, I think that would be the place to, if you want to, to give some specificity about how we're going to move forward. This is very general. This is, "We're going to cooperate and work for..." But I think we can do exactly what you said without having to change below the now-therefore line.
Okay, that's fine, but for that paragraph, though, where it says August 4th, and we need to remove Jackson, because that was not part of the letter from August 14th from the city. It just contained Madison and Bryan. That's what they asked us on August 14th.
Really?
Yeah, yes. So we need to remove...
And in the resolution, too?
No, it was the plan coming from the Public Works Committee.
Okay.
So we need to remove Jackson School.
Okay. You got it, Dave?
John, currently unimproved property? I'm not sure what that represents. It says currently unimproved property.
Where?
In that same paragraph.
Improved. Does it, it says unimproved, doesn't it?
All right, any other comments? Okay, then we'll move ahead to approval of board meeting minutes. Are there any changes to be made to the August 12th, August 27th, or September 9th, 2014 meeting minutes? Okay, hearing none, those will stand as presented. Board committee reports. Curriculum Instruction Committee. Okay, we reviewed everything today from our curriculum instruction meeting. We talked about, Charles Brandell gave the data review. We talked about key performance indicators and what would need to change. So I don't need to talk about any of that. The only other thing that we did was talk about our meeting topics, which I think is a great idea for all the committees. It's draft form, but we have mapped out what the committee wants to accomplish for the year. And, you know, topics like reach, ELL, big topics, and what month we try to address those topics. So it just gets the committee aligned to what we're going to be doing for the year. That's all I had. What about Finance and Operations? Oh, Chris left. Okay, how about the Policy Committee?
Excuse me. It's my new Chromebook, it's throwing me. We met on, last week. Though we had two press updates to consider, as well as some things that had been left over from previous meetings, we went through in rapid fashion. And there are so many different sections, they're almost all of them on the agenda for tonight. Most of them deal with new statutory or regulatory changes, including specific legislative mandates where the legislature or regulatory process asks us to deal with specific topics such as criminal background checks by contractors, things like that. Among the notable things that are in this collection is one policy, and we had a discussion of it at the committee, about the suspension of certified staff and the sequence of hearing procedures. And that's not on the agenda for tonight, right, Dave? Because you were going to get more guidance from the attorney, so that it follows both the law, the contract, and best practices. And we want to make sure that there's no ambiguity in the law. If there is ambiguity, we want to address it in the least risky way. Also notable is the policy for terms of officers. We had a good conversation, a lot of good views exchanged on whether our officers' terms, when we elect them, should go one year or two years. It's on the consent agenda, keeping the one-year term that was in it. But we thought we'd have a discussion about that to see what the will of the board is on that. I think we were two to one in committee, so there's room for, you know, differing views. It was, it was not at all, you know, contentious in any way. It's just different views about what makes sense for us as a group and how we want to plan for contingencies. So if we could talk about the one or two years now, we can either just leave it on the consent agenda if we go with one year, or pull it off and amend it to two years if that's the way we go. So I guess I'd throw it out for the board to discuss that particular fine point.
Okay, I agree, let's have that discussion now. Do you, anyone have any comments? I mean, I don't have any strong opinion either way, but I'm going to speak, I'll speak last.
Maybe I should summarize what was in the committee. On the positives, on the one-year side was, it's more flexible. It allows you to make changes, it allows someone to get a sense of it without committing for the two years. On the two-year side of the ledger was a sense that board officers need a year to figure out what's going on, and that the performance generally improves in the second year. Anything else, Dave? You were helpful in that discussion.
No, I think that was, you know, that was the two sides of the discussion.
Chris.
I'll give you my two cents. I think we should sentence our officers to two-year terms. No, my preference would be for two years. I think it provides some continuity. I don't feel strongly enough to oppose anything that would be one year, but if you want my opinion, I think a two-year sentence would be appropriate.
I lean towards maximum flexibility, but let the person come forward each year and try to get the support of the board. But again, it's more of a minor point.
I was in that discussion, and I too leaned toward the maximum flexibility just in the sense that certainly two years would increase likelihood, the knowledge of the group, but you can always decide to re-elect yourself, or to pose for reelection. Nominate, renominate yourself. We're part of it.
I won't talk just to talk, but I agree with the one year, so, for all those reasons.
Even number of people here, so...
Well, then I'll go to one year, and we're fine.
Okay. Is that the will of the board?
No, I didn't really say, because I don't have an opinion. I mean, it really hasn't changed recently, so, you know, it is good discussion and all. I like the flexibility. It's worked this way. I'm okay with it staying this way. It was pretty uneventful last time, so. I just don't want a lot of extra work discussion, that sort of thing, unnecessarily, because the year actually flies by. Seems like they come up faster than we think, so.
Just a reminder, right now, you, you're having this discussion. If somebody feels strongly about changing it, just to reiterate, it's not, it's written right now in your consent agenda, it's one year. So when we get to consent agenda, if somebody feels strong enough, then you need to pull it from that reading. So just so the board knows what the action is.
If someone feels strong about two years, you pull it?
Yes.
Because it's, if he feels strong, you sit it on your hands.
I just want to point out, it's not very often we discuss a topic that nobody feels strongly about in this group, so this is pretty nice.
This Finance and Operations Committee. We had the budget.
So we already went through the budget, went through August, which is the second, right? Second month of the fiscal year, nothing out of the ordinary to report. I think we're on plan on budget. The, you know, we talked earlier about the current year budget and the million, million-five dedicated towards maintenance. I think Frank Shue will be bringing to this, or his report that he reported to us will be coming to the full board at some point in the future for the projects for next summer. That's a million and a half dollars, which is what that funding amount represents. There are identified projects for those, those are maintenance needs. Again, nothing that does anything more than kind of keep things running. And then we will also, at that time, I think, review the longer-term facility, again, maintenance plan. So Frank updated that as well. I think we'd asked him to solve for spending a million and a half dollars a year in upkeep, which is kind of the rule of thumb for us. And then there's a few bigger items that may fit in if there were, if there were Tiff money available out of Tiff for from a surplus standpoint in the out years. So we talked a little bit about that, but again, that'll come to the board table. We talked about the budget, and then the last piece was just the York Bookstore. And just looking at the bookstore, the book fees, I think we've been getting some input from Y-SID about their ability to fund, to fund the books for certain students. And I think it's just good practice to look at our operations and see where we can do it better, different, same. And we had asked Chris to pull, I think, and report at a later date on some potential models that other districts are using that we can compare ourselves to going forward. So that's a very early-stage kind of just discussion. And if you guys have anything else to add, but that was, I think, pretty much it.
Okay, Superintendent's Consent Agenda. Would anyone want to remove an item on the consent agenda? Okay, hearing none. I need a motion to approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda items A through I. A through J. A through J.
I move that we approve the Superintendent's Consent Agenda, items A through J, as presented.
Second by Emily.
Second.
I was just thinking, is there any discussion? No, okay. So Ellen, we need a roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Ms. Sebner?
Yes.
Yes, the first we have this evening is the exception...
Yes, the first, first one we have this evening is the acceptance of a donation of $5,000 from the Music Boosters for the construction, which has already occurred, of a band, a band booster warehouse on the field. If you're at homecoming, you saw it along with a small section for the athletic boosters to sell York wear. So this evening, the board's being considered to accept that donation with gratitude from the Music Boosters. And I should say that our crew was the crew that built that. So want to thank Operations and Maintenance for putting that together for us.
Yes, is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve a donation, the amount of $5,000, from the Elmhurst Music Boosters for materials to construct an instrument warehouse. This donation is, is accepted in accordance with policy eight colon eighty, gifts to the district.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Karen, seconded by John. This is a voice vote, all. Motion by Karen, seconded by John. This is a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed?
I just, once again, you know, I know Dave thanked the boosters, but it, it was very nice of them to, to do this. And so we wanted to make sure that we formally recognize you. Thank you.
The next one, David, if we could put the resolution back up on its revision that the board discussed previously, just so we have it up. And the board is now to the point where you, you need to support or not support the resolution as before you this evening.
Going to make a motion? I just wanted to add one thing. So we're going to add to the motion with the changes made.
Resolution as amended.
Okay, go ahead.
And then, yeah, we call it Stormwater Resolution dated, dated.
Go ahead.
All right, I move that the Board of Education approve the proposed Stormwater Resolution dated September 23rd, 2014, as amended.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Motion by Emily, seconded by Karen. Is there any discussion? Thanks. Go ahead.
I don't think we can pass this without bringing up one idea that we should have discussed. That is the procedural way forward so that Shannon and I can get a sense of where the board is on more specific items. Not sure that this, you know, packed agenda, a long time discussing the stormwater things, I think a more appropriate thing might be to hold committee the whole, perhaps in finance and operations, and to, to dig down on, on some of the things that are, are going to be discussed in the agreement. I don't know if that's a, it's one idea out there.
Okay, yeah, I think just let Chris know what, which, you know, what the, what we need to talk about, and what the topics are, what you guys have so far.
What's the date of the next finance? I was down here on the-
Finance committee meeting?
It is-
Yes.
Yes, October 21st.
Any other discussion?
But as I said, this should give the city the comfort we're going to be working as a partner moving forward on this, that they can, with confidence. It is a request for free use of land. They should take some of the risk of this by spending some design money, but knowing that we're good faith partners in this effort.
Okay, we need a roll call vote for resolutions.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Mr. Collins is absent. Ms. Ebner?
Yes. Approval of resolution adopting the budget for fiscal year 2014-15.
Yes, again, we had the public hearing for the budget this evening, and so we're moving and asking the board to approve the resolution for adopting a budget for fiscal year 2014 and 15.
Oh, we need a motion. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education adopt the budget for fiscal year 2014-2015 as recommended, and that the president and secretary be authorized to enact the resolution and certificate of authorization.
Is there a second?
A second.
Move by John, seconded by Margaret. Is there any discussion? Okay, hearing none. Need another roll call vote.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Aye.
Mrs. Stufen?
Aye.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Ms. Ebner?
Yes, that motion passes.
The final resolution you have before you this evening is providing for the issue not to exceed 8,690,000 in general obligation refunding school bonds for the purpose of outstanding, of owning, outstanding bonds for the district and for the levy of the direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds. So we need a, there's a rationale and a recommendation this evening for that resolution.
Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the resolution providing for the issue of not to exceed 8,690,000 general obligation refunding school bonds for the purpose of refunding certain outstanding bonds to the district and for the levy of a direct annual tax sufficient to pay the principal and interest on said bonds.
Is there a second? You have to say, move by Emily, seconded by Chris. Is there any discussion?
I just want to point out, this is what we talked about last time. This is the parameters resolution for the refunding strategy that we had put together last time. That's it.
We have a roll call vote?
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Aye.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Ms. Ebner?
Yes, that motion passes. Upcoming meetings, Wednesday, October 1st, Curriculum and Instruction Committee meeting, Board of Education meeting, October 14th, Performance Management Committee, October 16th, October 21st. We talked about having Committee of the Whole meeting, and October 28th, another Board of Education meeting. Is there any board communication? Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I mixed it. Action on closed session items. Is there a motion?
I move that the Board of Education approve the administration's finding that Student A is not a resident of the school district because said student does not and has not been residing within the school district's attendance boundaries on a regular fixed basis since at least the beginning of the 2014-15 school year. As a result, I further move that Student A be disenrolled on September 26th, 2014, and that tuition be charged from the first day of the 2014-15 school year through the date of disenrollment in the amount of $2,068.20.
Is there a second?
A second.
Move by Emily, seconded by Margaret. Any discussion? Okay, we need a roll call vote.
Mrs. Bastido?
Yes.
Dr. Harrell?
Yes.
Mr. McDonough?
Yes.
Mr. Bloom?
Yes.
Mrs. Stufen?
Yes.
Mr. Collins is absent. Ms. Ebner?
Yes, that motion. Board communications. There's still something left to talk about here.
Sorry, but I just wanted to remind everyone that the Lend is having their first meeting of the year this Friday at 7:00 a.m. at Markort District 15. And House Leader Jim Durkin and Senate Leader Christine Rodonio will be present. Just FYI, Christine Rodonio is the author of the Senate Bill 16. So it'll be a big discussion.
Any, any discussion? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.